All right, well, this is the October 13th, 2022 meeting of the Town of Fischgill. Ithaca, that's where I used to live.
Wow.
That's pretty good. This is the Town of Fischgill Planning Board, and we'll call the meeting to order at 7:04 PM. Would you all please stand and join me in the House of Lords?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, this is one of the smallest crowds I've seen in the room lately. We have a few things to go over before we get to the regular agenda items, so give us a few minutes here. So I think we're going to have a full board as soon as Felix gets here, so I think we will have more than a quorum of board members tonight. Also, we have somebody new filling in for John Bodnar from CPL. Would you like to introduce yourself?
Sure, my name is Christian Moore with CPL.
All right, and it's good to have you with us.
Thank you.
And I know it was a last-minute thing, but I'm sure we will do very well. So, one thing I wanted to talk about, which is kind of just a chair's comment, and it's going to take a few minutes, so I think we're okay.
Just put your mic down, just a tick.
Thank you, John.
All righty, is that better?
Yes.
Although, I think it's more the audience at home that needs to hear it, because I think in this room with a few people, I think we'll be okay. And this really pertains to the Johnson Trail subdivision, which is not on tonight's agenda, but I felt I needed to address some of the comments that we received in emails after the close of the September 8th public hearing. So, one of the emails we received was from a Mr. Ramos, dated September 9th, 2022, and there were misstatements of fact about a proposed Hammerhead turnaround. Mr. Ramos indicated that the Hammerhead proposal was just added to the plans that appeared at the planning board at the public hearing, and his feeling was since the Hammerhead was a new development, that the public hearing should have been held open to allow comments on that. Well, that statement is not at all correct, not even close. The proposed Hammerhead was added to the subdivision plan set dated July 27th, 2021, over a year prior to the close of the public hearing, and it was added at the request of the Town of Fischgill Highway Superintendent for snowplow, turnaround, and snow removal and storage. Plans showing the proposed Hammerhead were first presented to the planning board at the August 12th, 2021 planning board meeting, and the Hammerhead has appeared on all subsequent subdivision plans submitted to the board since then, and was discussed by the board several times. So, I felt that that misstatement of fact had to be corrected, certainly. Another email dated 9/10/22 from John Hup was received on September 12th, 2022 with several comments, one of which includes the same reference to the proposed Hammerhead turnaround being introduced as a new change to the plans at the September 8th planning board meeting. As I indicated previously, this is an incorrect statement that needs to be corrected for the record. Mr. Hup also stated in his email that a public comment was made at the September 8th public hearing by a member of the community stating that they had initiated a Freedom of Information Act request to the Department of Environmental Conservation, and that the pending Freedom of Information request was another reason that he believed that the public hearing should have been kept open for additional public comment. Well, the planning board is not aware of what that Freedom of Information request was about, and we have not heard anything about it additionally. Of course, any member of the public has a right to file a Freedom of Information Act request with the government office, but such filing, especially without any indication of what information has been requested, has no relevance to whether or another municipal agencies or board's public hearing should be held open. Unfortunately, Mr. Hup also made inappropriate and accusatory comments about the planning board in his email regarding the planning board's closing of the public hearing, and I won't even mention on the air what that was. But I would respectfully request that members of the public not make accusatory or derogatory comments about the planning board, or anyone else for that matter, but especially when such comments are based on inaccurate statements or misrepresentations of fact. In addition, the planning board opened the public hearing on July 14th, 2022, and continued the hearing on August 11th, 2022, and September 8th, 2022, giving the public an opportunity to comment on the Johnson Trail subdivision at three planning board meetings. Quite unusual. The purpose of public hearings pursuant to New York State and town laws is to provide the opportunity for the public to speak and submit comments regarding applications that are being considered by the planning board, but not necessarily to resolve all issues and comments made prior to the closing of a public hearing. The planning board takes into consideration all relevant substantive and accurate comments made at the public hearings, along with the written records submitted during the application process, which can often be quite lengthy and complex, as well as the relevant provisions of New York State laws and Town official code provisions, and makes its determinations and findings accordingly. I just thought it would be helpful for the public to understand this. In subsequent emails, Mr. Hup has requested a direct response from the planning board regarding the comments he made in his original email. It is not the practice of, nor is it a requirement, that the planning board make formal responses to emails or other written comments received from members of the public. His emails have been entered into the project file record, however, I felt that the inaccuracies and misstatements of fact and procedures in his emails required a correction of the facts for the public record. So, that's it. Just wanted to check if there were any additional comments on that, or any other thing that you'd like to bring up quickly before we get into the regular agenda? Board members or staff?
Still moved on your statement.
I don't think we need to vote on it, but it's certainly something I think we all think about when those things happen, and it's too bad when they do, but it doesn't hurt, and this one I felt really needed to be something that we aired in the public, because those things just shouldn't happen. That's my feeling. So.
And rightly so.
Okay, so why don't we move on with the regular agenda now? Welcome on this very lovely evening out there.
Good evening, Gary Baywright. Jay called out sick about an hour and a half ago, so he told me I had to stand in for him. So I hope he don't mess us up too bad.
All right, so let me just read from the agenda. This is the Foma and Wash amended site development plan, the board to review the site development plan application and supporting documentation that was referred by the planning board at the September 8th, 2022 planning board meeting. So, yeah, if you could just, I know we got a brief introduction of the project at the last meeting, but if you could just give us a quick reiteration of that, that would be great.
Sure. So, we have the Foma and Wash car wash at 778 Route 9 in Fischgill, heading north on Route 9. We built it about 20 years ago with an exterior conveyor car wash and a three-bay oil change. In the last couple of years, the oil change, the whole industry and things, it hasn't been part of our business. So, we're looking to just be just a car wash, so what we'll be doing is adding a 24-hour touchless automatic. It allows different cars, a lot of guys have those smaller cars now, or they have big trucks with lots of things on them, they can't go through the automatic car washes, so it's kind of an option for them. And also, it's a touchless option, which a lot of people like, so it's kind of, it gives it a little diversity, kind of the conveyorized car washes, you know, soft cloth, all that, and some people like nothing touching their car. What it also does is it allows us to add additional vacuum stalls, which has always been a problem at the end of the car wash. You know, we just didn't quite have enough, and what this does is it gives us eight more stalls on the south side, so people can vacuum first and then go through the car wash, or if they can come around and back in there and then pull out. And also, we have two kiosks for the tunnel, and if you have an unlimited, which is something that is fairly new to our industry, we have like an RFID tag on your car, and it's like an easy pass. What you do is if there's that extra cashier off to the side, if somebody's at the first one on the left-hand side, which is casher, token note, or coupon, or something like that, the other people can go right by. So what it does, it gets the line, gives us more steady traffic, instead of like, you know, maybe five cars lined up, and then they go through, and then all of a sudden everybody else is in line, they go faster. So it kind of gives us a nice steady thing, it keeps the lines down a lot. Let's see, trying to think what else. Got to be something else. That's about it.
All right, well, that's a good start, and we can, I'm sure we'll have some questions and get into some discussion. Wanted to just start by saying we did receive the referral response dated October 11th, 2022, from the Dutchess County Department of Planning and Development. Have you received a copy?
Yes.
Okay, good, so you've had a chance to take a look at that?
Yes, we have.
Okay. So anyway, the county has determined this to be a matter of local concern with comments, but they did have a number of comments dealing with lighting. They thought there were very high levels of lighting, so we might want to talk about that a little bit. They thought that could result in glare and light pollution, and there was also a lack of detail regarding the light fixtures.
Mm-hmm, okay.
County letter also raised concerns about excessive parking, more than is even required, and so they included suggestions for reducing the number of parking spaces in certain areas, so that's something to consider. And so at the last meeting, the planning board had also commented about the possibility of retaining at least some of the existing mature trees along the Route 9 frontage, and the county actually said the same thing. They thought there were trees in good condition there, and so it would make sense, and you know, certainly the mature trees provide benefits of shading and cooling, and certainly improving the visual character of the streetscape. They also added the suggestion to add evergreen plant materials in the mix so that it could provide some year-round screening, and also comments about excessive signage and illumination of signs. So.
So a few things, the lighting is, I know the county, you know, the area lighting, this is more task lighting, so what it is, we put the lights on the vacuum thing, and it shines down on the car, and with LED lighting, it's more direct, so, you know, has a direct lighting, and it's lighting in between the cars, so it's lighting up when the people are, you know, working inside their car, vacuuming their car, cleaning their car, doing whatever. And being LED, it shines a lot, you know, more direct at what you want to light up. As far as the parking, it's funny, last time at the meeting, the one lady came up and talked about the curb at the exit.
Yeah.
And what we decided to do was take that southern, southwest parking space out, and shorten that down a little bit, and put grass and shrubbery there, so it'd be, it's hard to see there, but if you see, when you're coming in and out, so right where the out is, is that little dog bone kind of thing, might be, what we're going to do is make that the whole parking spot, so it will add to landscape, it will add to, plus it won't have a car there. I think part of the problem is that when we were there after she spoke, went to the next, you know, like you're in the forest, you can't see the trees up there all the time, and never really noticed it. But with a car there, it kind of also makes people have to swing around a little bit, so that'll clean that up. As far as the trees in the front, it's funny, Central Hudson came in the other day, and they trimmed them down, because that was part of the problem, they were getting really high. So now they've trimmed it down, what we're going to do is we're going to trim up, but we're going to definitely leave all those trees there. I don't know why they weren't on the plan, because they're nice trees. And there's some evergreens there, and we will definitely add some more to the front there. What was the other thing you had in there? Signage. So all in all, we're reducing the signage by 17% from what we have now, so we actually have less signage by 17% proposed for the building. What was the other thing? Any else?
Let's see.
Did you ever check to see what water district you're in?
Kind of.
Kinda.
Well, we're in the village of Fischgill.
You're getting your water from the village.
Right, so we have.
You're not a district for the village, but you're definitely not in Adlenham school, you're not in Adlenham area, which is.
That's where the bill, we just took the bill and went off the bill, so we have to figure out what it is. So we, it's our own district, and when we did, is we built the car wash, we got it from the village, you know, with an agreement, something like that to the town, so I guess when they're billing us, it says Glenham, so we'll figure out what. But it's not, we know it's not there, I guess.
Doesn't exist, so.
That's what the bill says, so I don't know. We'll figure it out.
That's okay.
But the property is located in the town?
Yes.
But they're getting the water from, there may have been an intermunicipal agreement to provide the original parcel of water, but.
Right, that's what it was. It didn't have water and sewer the site, so we got it from the village, and we have a whole, it's our little district that we actually, we built the water line, the sewer line, and we maintain it and all that stuff. So the village, I guess, bills the town, and then the town bills us?
I have no idea.
Yeah, that would be.
I know it's getting paid, so.
That's almost like.
Somebody is.
You're paying somebody.
Yeah.
If I may, that is typically how it works, is that the village will build the town, and the town puts it in your property tax bill, so.
Well, yeah, but so I don't know why it says Glenham or whatever, I don't know, we can, so. It's not a town district, it's a district that was set up way back when. We were hoping it would get extended, and the town was going to take it over, but they haven't, hasn't gone up the road at all. That was the plan in the beginning.
Okay. All right, well, we have an engineering memorandum from CPL. Chrisman, why don't you go through that real quickly?
Sure. Are my levels okay? Okay. Subject to discussion with the planning board attorneys, our opinion, this project can be classified as a Type II action under SEAKER. We just spoke about the water district. Further, any modifications would require approval from the village's water sewer department as required for the proposed modifications. We're asking for estimates of the existing versus proposed water use, and that's how that may impact the village's intermunicipal agreement. Consideration ought to be given to dissolving the lot line that goes across the back portion of the lot, between the access road and the stormwater management area. It looks like that lot line generally follows a zoning boundary.
Mm-hmm.
Just provide, you know, just state that for the board's consideration. The site appears to be located in the 100-year floodplain. The floodplain limits ought to be added to the plans. Based on the FEMA mapping, it's an AE zone that has an actual elevation. I don't recall the exact elevation off the top of my head.
Okay.
But based on that, you should, you could probably have your consultant trace over that contour and, you know, define where the floodplain is and isn't.
Mm-hmm.
Just have to make sure that when the survey was done, the vertical datum is what FEMA uses, otherwise things could be off.
Okay.
By several feet.
So use a survey that we have compared to the elevations of.
Yeah, I mean, you know, confirm with your survey that he used the same vertical datum that FEMA uses, otherwise, you know, FEMA's 280 elevation might be different than a 280 on this site.
Gotcha.
Some site-related, you know, ask for a legend. Is the existing kiosk adjacent to Route 9 to remain?
I don't know what that means.
Is there the existing? I think it's shown on the plan, isn't it?
Yeah.
Along the, along the front, the front.
Oh, sorry, another kiosk, it's a vending, it's a vending area. Yes, it's, yeah, kiosk, right. What is it, it's a vending and a change machine? That'll remain there, yes.
Okay, that's true. Are any revisions or changes proposed to the existing free-standing sign?
No, stay as is.
Angled parking spaces ought to be labeled with dimensions. There is a detail on one of the sheets, but to confirm, you may just want to have a couple of the angled spaces dimensioned.
Oh.
Because sometimes when those are laid out in the field, they measure, they're not measuring on the right angle, and the spaces wind up coming up short.
Gotcha.
When they're, when they're striping.
Okay, because the nice thing is we're going to be reducing the parking, or since we don't have the oil change, we're going to be able to reduce the parking on that side, so we can redo anything there and make sure it's right.
Okay, there's a call-out for a relocated light fixture and pole, but the location is not clear. It doesn't appear that any proposed lighting is provided in the parking area on the northerly side of the building.
Yeah, there's lighting there, but Jay just didn't put the existing lighting over there on the plan. I guess we should, though. Makes sense.
We suggest that the planning board review and discuss the adequacy of the proposed landscaping and lighting plans.
Yep.
Obviously, the Dutchess County Planning, in their memo, they mentioned lighting as is typical along Route 9 corridor regarding excessive lighting levels, glare, color temperature. Landscaping planning details should be added, and just a comment to the board, should review and discuss the proposed building elevations, colors, and exterior finishes. That's all we had.
Good, okay, thanks. All right. So, let's see if board members have any comments or questions.
Well, I had a comment last time. I don't know if you worked on it at all, but the entrance going in, with a signage or some, or somehow you can prevent people from going in to the previous.
Oh, in the Mavis.
Yeah. Because that's a sort of an accident waiting to happen with people going in, coming around, and making a quick U-turn.
Yeah. Yeah, I talked to my manager about that, he says he definitely sees some people come in there.
There's some who like.
But you see it, so. He's in the back, he doesn't see as much as you do.
And I've done it, and I go there a lot, so I just.
I understand. Well, the problem is, because it goes from three lanes to two lanes, so it's, if you're in that third lane, that is Mavis, which is.
I don't know if there's anything you can do, you know, the engineering, whatever it is, that you can.
Yeah.
I agree. I was just there today, so. And, you know, it is very, as you're driving up, it's so easy to turn into the Mavis by mistake. Very easy, so. I don't know what you can do. I was trying to see, I was driving by, just to try, I was thinking about your question, actually. And I don't know if there's maybe something you can do to, maybe on the sidewalks, delineate the different, you know, so people, if they know they're going to your place, they're not making that turn in. I'm not sure how we can make, I was thinking maybe striping or something on the curb, I don't know. I'm not sure if that's allowed or not, but, you know, it's, it's very easy to make that turn. Like, I was thinking about you today, there's always going there. But just something to think about, because I think it is, you know, I've seen it, I know I've done it by mistake many times.
Yeah, I think eliminating the oil change is hopefully going to help that, because they, those customers come a lot less, and, you know, they come in two, three times a year, maybe, and the eliminated customers come in too much. So a lot of people, 60% of our people are pretty much unlimited, they're there almost every week, if not more. So, that might help. Although, I think the problem is that if you're in that far right lane, it kind of ends there.
Well, I had a couple of things, Mr. Chairman, if I may. Yeah, go ahead.
No, I was looking at the county planning memo, and one of the things that they talked about was they felt like 16 vacuum spots were too much, was excessive. So I just want you to talk about it, then I wanted to ask about the several ones, because it seems like it says there are seven parking spots, but eight vacuums. So, just wanted to.
Sure.
For you to clarify.
A few things, well, she mentions the Wappingers Falls location, she says there's only eight, but there's 16 there, because there's eight on the side, there's eight, there's 16 on the site there.
Okay.
Part of the reason to close the oil change was to have more vacuums, so for the county to tell me I don't need as many vacuums is a little strange to me. So we are eliminating the one, which is probably the most important one, the first one, you know, when you come in. We are limiting one in the front, and the reason that it shows an extra vacuum, is there's one on the driver's side and passenger side of every car.
Okay.
So if you're on that last spot, there's, there's one on each side.
Okay.
So you can vacuum from either side.
Okay, and then I know they asked about parking.
What's the parking used for?
Yeah.
Well, it's, well, it's the employee parking, but you can see we, we reduced it down, and we put the, so the handicaps, so really, there's only one, two, three, four, five, six spaces.
What's it used for, besides the employees?
Employees, yeah, it's just the employee parking.
Okay.
Because I don't know anybody who would go there just to park.
I hope not.
Yeah, I thought it was.
And you don't have the oil change, you know, waiting?
Right, so, yeah, we eliminated the parking, and then what we did is we, so we eliminated a lot of the parking spaces already. And she also says that we should have the vacuums over there, which is a little hard for people to go all the way around the whole car wash twice, which is a little strange. So we have, you know, because, you know, say we have four or five guys working there, maybe a maintenance guy shows up or somebody else, we want to have enough parking spaces for them. And as I said, we are reducing some.
Are you planning on putting in any electric odometers for tree charging?
We've looked at them before, but, you know, if you have the Tesla ones down there, everybody wants the fast ones, and you really don't put the, you know, you can't really afford to put those in.
Also, I would think this is kind of a fast in-and-out kind of an operation, and to charge a vehicle, you're going to be leaving your car there for a while and go somewhere, hopefully walk somewhere else, and there isn't a whole lot to walk to in that particular area.
Yeah.
You can walk to the cemetery.
Well, maybe the cemetery should have some recharging stations. In more ways than one.
Yeah.
All right, that's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
All right.
Yeah, no, I, I visited a few of the, you know, I see the new one in Kipsey and the other place, and of course, Wappingers has been there forever, and that was first when you guys changed over, and you can, you can see the difference, like, of fact, of in Wappingers, it's more industrial-looking as far as when you pull up to it, and I mean, I guess in Fischgill, it's a little different and stuff like that. As far as, I don't know, I've never had a problem pulling into the wrong place, just to be, I'll be honest with you, but I can understand, but I don't know what you're going to be able to do on your property, not to have somebody turn into Mavis. Mavis would have to have something there to help Foma and Wash.
Yeah, I mean.
And I don't know if you can really, you know.
I don't think they want another sign to say, go to the next.
Good neighbor, just to dictate, whatever. And then, as far as, because I'm, I'm sorry, my hearing is a little, little whatever, but the reduction of the parking spaces on the employee's side is because of just aesthetics, or?
Well, less employees, with that, the oil change, we don't need that in places, so that's what we want to do, we want to add more green space.
Okay. All right, yeah. That's really, really it, my end.
Dominic, did you have anything to?
I concur with CPL's comment regarding SEAKER in connection with this project, so it is Type II, which means that you don't have to circulate for lead agency or take any further action under SEAKER in considering this application. I'm not sure that there would be any other agencies involved in any event. But in addition to that.
I'm full of that.
Ah, sorry about that. In addition to that, you know, the board has to consider ultimately as to whether or not, when the project's ready for a public hearing, and so this is the, you had it on for a first appearance, but it hadn't had the benefit of the consultant's comments at that time. You now have additional information, and also, the applicant has information from the consultants and CPL in particular, but also from the board members, so the board has to decide when the right juncture would be for the information to be ready for the public to review and comment on.
Excuse me, Mr. Chair, I did have a few comments before we go too much further.
All right.
I did count eight spaces on the northern side in the proposed plan, seven regular spaces and one accessible parking space, so I guess the question would be, is that, I mean, how many staff are you planning on having for a given shift?
Maximum would probably be five, but they switch shifts, so there might be two or three guys on, and somebody else comes in, and they count the drawer or do whatever they got to do, so there's overlap. And then we always have, want to have one spot, like I say, a maintenance truck or management or something like that to come in.
Okay, no, I think that's a good answer, appreciate it. Also, I know we've talked about this on other projects, complete streets, Route 9 is one of those streets that we would consider for something like that, for consideration of a sidewalk. I don't think it's appropriate here, there are no sidewalks in that area, but it's probably worth the discussion. And the other thing I would have is if the applicant could also show the facade and the appearance of the exterior of the building, I don't think that's. I don't think that's really been displayed for the benefit of the board and the public yet. That would be something, that would be helpful.
Yeah, and we also, we usually ask for actual material boards with samples, so we'll need that.
Yeah, we have all that. It's the same material we've used, we're using up in Poughkeepsie and Wapengers and Newburgh.
I think the plan drawing included some parts of the elevations, but they weren't real detailed.
No, it didn't. I was hoping that the screen wouldn't have gone out at that very moment. I was hoping that would be an opportunity to kind of have it on screen, just, I know we've had the opportunity to see it. I don't know if the public has, but, you know, he mentioned it has a similar appearance to the other, the other businesses. And I believe the height was being reduced in the proposed.
Yes, we're reducing the height. Originally, we're going to keep part of the oil change and then use that building. But then Jay, when we, of course, we looked at the building joint, since that ceiling, that was an oil change, we had lifts, it was a lot higher ceiling. So, we're reducing the overall height of the building by about four feet, I think.
Can you flip to the other sheet, which I think does show? The one with the elevations? There, you go. That's it. Thanks.
Yeah, so that's the elevation facing, the larger one there by the arrow, that's facing south. So, the elevation drops down. It used to be higher. And then there's windows there, there's glass inside, and some people, a lot of people like the glass. This way, when you're in the car wash, you can see outside. It's not like a tunnel, which people like that. Plus, it faces the south, so it lets some light in, some natural lighting inside. And then the red and the blue and the silver is very similar to what we're doing at the other locations. The booth is just our kiosk, so we, when the guys in the hot and cold seasons, they can be in a kiosk when they're out with, by the cashiers. The lower right hand is the front elevation, which we're keeping the turret that's there now. And on the other side, we're not going to have the turret. We're just going to have it drop down with our system.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I think it's good for everybody to see.
Yeah, thanks.
Was there, was there a, down below, when they did the oil?
We used the lift.
Okay. I had a few comments, but a lot of them have already been discussed either by board members or the county. So, we already covered the issue of retaining mature trees on the site, and I'm glad to hear that that should work out. So, yeah, we'll need to see basically a revised landscaping plan showing those, as well as, we talked about some additional evergreens being added to the plan. The, you know, I like the idea of the oriental fountain grass in certain locations, but it seemed like that was the main addition in the frontage. And, you know, of course, those don't really add a whole lot during winter months. In fact, they usually get cut down from my experience in the winter. So, any, anything you can do to add some evergreen full year round screening would be great.
Yep.
So, you mentioned that slight widening of the site entrance. And definitely, we do need the lighting deal, detail, cut sheets, so. I think, you know, I think that's about it. That's basically what I had.
And I think one of the things that we might have brought up was the water usage. Part of this thing, now that it's twenty years later, there's really good reclaim systems, and we're putting them in our new locations as we redo them. And this allows us to, since we have that additional equipment room now, to put this reclaim system in. So, we actually plan on reducing the water sewer on the site, because we're going to hopefully reuse at least twenty. The automatic, we'll use a little bit more, but we figured about a third of those customers are already coming from the car wash, the tunnel. So, we think with the reclaim system, we should be reducing the water by at least twenty percent, which we want to do ourselves, because this is the most, the water here is more expensive, because we pay double what the rate is. Because we're at a district. It's one of those things we signed and said, oh, yeah, this makes sense. And then later, we're like, whoa.
How big, how big was the piping that you put in for the water and sewer?
It's a four-inch water line. But then we reduce it down to two inches, and then from there, it goes down even lower.
And does it just, it goes right into your property, or just goes longer?
We ran it, when we ran it, originally, we ran it from the village all the way up to the end of our property.
On Route 9?
On Route 9, yeah.
You didn't go in the back way?
No, we came up Route 9, because the plan was, at the time was, you know, they want, we had to run it to state specs and the whole thing, like, because they wanted, it was let people tie into it later, and then they would take it over. That's the plan, someday to run.
And it's Mavis hooked into?
Yes.
And speaking of the water situation, and, you know, basically the drainage and runoff, based on the fact this is a car washing site, basically. What, just tell us briefly what the procedures are for, you know, the water with the soap and whatever other cleansers are being used, how that's, you know, treated, or how it goes into the system.
Yeah, so, what, all the water goes into a, it's all retained on site in the car wash, and what it does, it goes into a, if you look on the northern side of the plan, there's actually settling tanks out there. So, all the water goes out to these settling tanks, and then it keeps going. It settles out each time, so it drops the dirt off each, each tank. The dirt goes in, it's not, it's on the, I know it was on the one plane. So, what happens, the water goes out, and then it keeps dropping down, because the water slows down, and it just settles out. And then we have a company comes in, they pump it out, then we have an oil-water separator before it goes out to the municipal sewer.
You can see on sheet two of five in the survey, it actually shows three vaults.
Yeah, so those are the tank, those are the vaults on the.
Yeah.
On the side, on the north, the, all the way to the top there. So, what happens is it drains out into each one. It goes along, then it comes around the front to an oil-water separator in the front, and then it goes out to the municipal sewer. And the sewer companies seem to like our water, because it keeps moving, and it's, you know, it's liquid.
That's always good. All right. Well, why don't we see if there's a motion to classify this application for the proposed foam and wash amended site development plan located at seven seven eight Route 9 as a type-two action?
So moved.
Second.
All right. That was moved by Fred, seconded by Felix. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Any abstentions? All right, that passes unanimously. So, yeah, talking about a public hearing. I'm kind of of the mind that there still seems to be, you know, some details that we need to see, to be added to the plans, revised plans. We're getting close, but I think it's, it's getting there. But I think I would prefer holding off on scheduling the public hearing until we get those revisions, and so if we're happy with those at the November meeting, you know, we could always set the hearing for the December meeting. What do other members think?
I agree. I agree with you, sir.
I agree. The county made some, a couple of pages worth of comments at this point. It'd be nice to see a revised plan and how the applicant intends to address that before we go any further.
Yeah, we had a few nice changes from even the first meeting. We just didn't do any of them yet, because we figured we just, we only got the other stuff the other day, so Jay.
Yeah.
You know, he probably would have liked to do more and charge me, but I didn't.
If things work out well at the next meeting with revisions, we could probably consider scheduling the public hearing as well as, well, actually, there are no, no Seeker documents that'll need to be prepared, because we just determined it was a take-to-action, which does not require any further environmental review. So, we might even, you know, think about the possibility of, at that point, then authorizing the preparation of draft resolution and approval. So, we can always reserve that and see what happens.
So, no final tonight, is that what you're saying?
Probably not even preliminary.
And I did get notice.
Good try.
I have a property near you, so I did get notice.
Okay, good.
It's a valiant effort.
All right, well, do you have any questions for us?
I don't think so. Thank you. Appreciate you coming out tonight.
Yeah, thank you, also.
I was a little nervous, and then I, you know, nobody, I was like, make the room smaller and nobody here. This is like, you know. I appreciate that.
All right, thank you.
Thanks, Gary.
Thank you.
You too.
What is the deadline for the November meeting?
What was that?
What is the deadline for something?
They're all out there ready to ask.
Oh, yeah.
The team is there.
The deadline, yeah, the deadline for submissions is, actually, I'll tell you a little bit later.
Twenty-sixth of October.
There you go. Oh, there were people out there. Welcome this stormy evening.
Yes, I did not bring my umbrella or my raincoat, so I have a soggy file that I used as an umbrella running in.
All right, well, this is the four fifteen to four fifty-three US Route 9 Site Development Plan and CHI Acquisitions Two Lot Subdivision. Board to review submission made by the applicant's representative on September twenty-six, twenty twenty-two, and declare itself lead agency. So, please, if you would like to give us an update on where things stand.
Absolutely, thank you. Good evening, everyone. My name is Jennifer Gray from the law firm of Keen and Bean. Rick O'Rourke sends his regards from the grand state of North Carolina. I'm here tonight on behalf of CHI Acquisitions. With me tonight is Brad Vander Vliet on behalf of the applicant, as well as Connor Jaeger. I also have Franz Lackey, our professional engineer from SESI Consulting Engineers, and Amanda LaRosa, our traffic engineer from Stonefield. We are here for the continued review of the application submitted in May for the construction of a warehouse building of about three hundred and fifty thousand square feet on the southern porch, excuse me, southern portion of the Duchess Mall property. We were last before the board on August eleventh of twenty twenty-two, and we have submitted responses to all of the outstanding comment memos. We're also in receipt of CPL's latest memo from October eleventh. We will be submitting a written response to that memo with our next submission. I also note that we recently received from SHPO a letter of no impact, and I believe you all have a copy of that as well. That was based on a review of the Phase 1A that was performed and submitted to SHPO and submitted to your board as well for review. We also received a copy of Dutchess County Planning's response to our response to their memo, and we understand that they are satisfied with those responses. We do believe that we've made some good progress in advancing the application and responding to comments from your consultants, from the board, and from outside agencies. We're happy to go through some of those updates with you tonight, and we would request at tonight's meeting that you do declare yourself lead agency. More than thirty days has passed since the circulation of your notice of intent to declare lead agency. And we would also request that the board consider scheduling a public hearing for your next available meeting. So, with that, what I'll do is I'll turn it over to Franz to walk through any of the updates that you're interested in hearing about, and of course, we're happy to answer any questions that you have. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening. Franz Lackey from SESI Consulting Engineers, I'm site civil engineer for this project. So, I'm going to bring up our latest rendering for the site. It is largely the same as what we've been presenting previously. So, we took into account the comments from the various agencies and professionals. We submitted written response to everything and resubmitted plans at that time. We have received a new, a new comment letter from CPL, which we will address all the comments in there. There was nothing that we really had any objections to, mostly permits that we need to apply for, which we agree with, and we've already identified ourselves. So, what had been brought up. So, what had been asked of us by the board last time we were here was to show some feasibility of what might be able to be built in the front of the site, the retail pads, just as a context, and what we could be looking at. So, we prepared a conceptual plan, which was included in the submission package, which was essentially this without the color rendering to it, and shows two potential retail pads in the front, one more of a quick-serve restaurant and another a pharmacy is what we kind of, we're looking at at the time. But it's, it's overall very generic on something that can be put there, and that portion is not part of this application, we'll make that clear. It's, the application is for the main warehouse portion in the rear here. These are just for conceptual, contextual purposes. And that's really our overall update. If you guys have any questions?
I think probably the only thing I would add to the conceptual idea of what could go on the site, it's also going to be helpful for making our Seeker determination in a, you know, in a more generic way. Obviously, the planned shopping center district allows quite a range of uses, so those will probably be fairly good representations of, you know, what types of things could go there, based on the site sizes and all that. So, we appreciate you showing that.
Okay, excellent. Thank you.
I don't know, I'll ask board members if there are any specific comments or questions on this aspect. I know we'll have some more questions on some of the other things, and we'll get into the, some of the engineering details in a few minutes. Particularly, we'll be interested in hearing a little bit more about the traffic study and update. So.
Not on this, Mr. Chairman.
All right. And actually, I'll have some comments and observations about the original, you know, plan details and elevation drawings, but we'll get to that a little bit later as well. So, do we want to hear about the traffic study a little bit at this point?
Okay.
Okay.
We'll bring up mandated softball traffic.
Good evening, Chairman, members of the board. I'm Amanda LaRosa with Stonefield Engineering. My firm had prepared the traffic impact study that was submitted in connection with this application. Most recently, we had responded to comments from both CPL and the NICE that we issued this as a joint submission. I know the last time we were here, the board had some questions about the DOT review. So, we had included both submissions together to hopefully give you guys a clearer picture of where we're at with the DOT. So, it's a brief overview of the responses to CPL. We do feel that the original comment letter, they've indicated that the comments were satisfactorily addressed. So, I'll happily explain anything that you have further questions on in there. But I do want to point out that, that they indicated that those comments were satisfied. There have been three new comments that are issued that we do intend to provide a comprehensive response to. That'll be included in our next submission before the public hearing. As an update on the DOT process, we have made a formal engineering submission. It's currently under review. I'm happy to forward any correspondence once they get back to us, but right now, they're basically reviewing the traffic impact study for themselves, along with a handful of exhibits that they had asked for, and some comments that we had responded to pertaining to the precise methodology contained in the report. I'm sure you guys have some questions, so if you have anything that you'd like to ask, why don't we start there?
Do you want me to?
Sure, go ahead, Fred.
Well, I have, I have two comments. One of them is, when you did the traffic study, did the Continental Commons project enter into the, into the study?
No, so we did do some outreach to the town. The only project that was flagged at that point was the project to the rear of the site on the golf course redevelopment. So, our study did include projections for that development. The routing of the trips for that was actually directly through our site, so that was in our study, but that was the only.
Because there's, there's a project that's just been approved across the street.
Okay.
Which is going to have a hotel and a small mall.
Okay, I'm happy to look into that. It didn't come across in the preliminary outreach that we had done, but I will ask about it.
And the second one is, are you proposing a light or no light? I believe you are proposing no light.
So at this point, we've prepared a traffic signal warrant analysis, actually, a few different ways, and at this point, the volumes are indicating that a signal is not warranted. We have had correspondence with DOT, and we've indicated that the applicant is happy to install a signal should they improve it, but they're currently going through our analysis to decide whether or not they feel it would be appropriate, given that the traffic volumes along Route Nine and coming out of our site don't actually meet the criteria just based on volumes alone.
Because I am concerned with the speed that people come down at fifty-five miles, supposedly fifty-five miles an hour, and we used to have a light there.
Yes.
But the old, you know, and they did remove it, and you have these big trucks coming out, all right? And if you're going to go towards eighty-four, which I'm assuming the majority of them are going to go north, all right? I see that an accident waiting to happen.
Yeah, so the traffic impact study that we had resubmitted actually included a scenario where the signal was installed, so the DOT is currently reviewing that, and if they feel that it will operate acceptably aside from that it might not meet the volume warrants, it's possible that they might grant it.
Okay, well, those are my two concerns with the, with the traffic study was, what, a thousand pages?
Yeah, so I wanted to just mention that as part of my comments that I was going to make later, but since we're talking about the traffic signal, that was actually part of the new description in the traffic impact study update in the section called twenty-twenty-four mitigation condition, and that involved an analysis of reinstalling that traffic signal at the central site access that used to be there. And I actually think it's a particularly good idea, especially in the way it would help facilitate left-turning movements for trucks exiting the site at the central access. So it looked like the modeling, and not that I'm an expert in traffic modeling, but indicates that the traffic with such a traffic signal installed would operate well at the central access driveway. And it seems like it would be a beneficial mitigation measure in addition to the planned proposal. You know, at some point, we can ask other board members what you think, but it would also, I think, help to encourage trucks exiting the site to use the central access point versus trying to work their way up to the northern access, which basically will be restricted or prohibited for their use under what I understand is an agreement that was reached between the owner of the other portion of the site and the applicant. So, you know, anything that can help to reduce those truck movements going up to the northern access, I think, would be beneficial, and it seems like installing a traffic signal that would better control that access would help to do that. So again, I'm glad to hear that you're discussing this with DOT, coordinating with DOT on that option, I think, would be a good thing, and I think would help to make a safer and more efficient access at that central access point. So that's my way of looking at it.
Yes, I would agree with everything you've stated so far, and will continue to pass along to DOT that this board has indicated their preference for a signal.
Okay, thanks.
Is there the possibility of a southbound on nine or widening for a turn lane in, especially at the southern entrance? That's kind of where the nine narrows to one lane.
Yeah, so we did run the truck turns at both of the driveways. We're anticipating that most of the truck traffic related to our site is actually going to be using the central access, and based on these truck turns, the only recommendation that we're making at this point is to remove the concrete island that channelizes that right turn and to make it a striped one. It'll just make the movements for the truck a little bit easier, so the truck drivers don't have to take the turn quite so tight. But at this point, that's really the only mitigation that we're proposing for trucks into the site, the only one that we really deem necessary based on the turning exhibits that we've prepared.
Yeah, what Anthony was mentioning down at the southern site access, it's a location where the two southbound lanes begin narrowing down to one right at that point, and it's, in my mind, particularly troublesome as it is now, let alone with large trucks that may end up going that far. You know, possible some trucks might miss the central access and end up entering the site down, down there. There already is a left-turn lane for northbound traffic, so that's good that that's there already. But I also think that a right-turn lane for southbound trucks entering the site down in that area would be something that should definitely be looked into. I was just wondering if there had been any specific discussions on that with state DOT at this point?
It hasn't come up specifically, but we can certainly reevaluate that intersection.
Yeah, I think that would be, that would be a very good idea. There certainly is plenty of room on that part of the site to add a turning lane there, and, you know, I just think, I'm always waiting for an accident to happen there, even under current conditions, and so with additional truck traffic that might be down there, it might actually, and I'm not sure if the traffic study did any kind of an analysis of the split between trucks that might enter at the center and center, center access versus the southern access, but it'd be interesting to know what the projections for that might be.
Yeah, we did look at that. We're expecting almost all of the traffic to come from eighty-four, quite honestly, so we are expecting that the northern of the two driveways will be the primary access point, just because it would be the first one that a truck would come up to, but we certainly will look to design appropriate access at both of the driveways.
Okay, good.
You've said, you guys have said everything that I wanted to talk about, so next time I'll go first.
Or feel free to expand on it. I'm sure we probably missed something.
John, I don't know if it's a traffic thing, but it involves Route Nine, and we mentioned on the last project about complete streets as well. Is this, I know it's probably more civil, maybe not necessarily related to the traffic study, but.
It's transportation.
It is, and I do have interior transportation comments later, which we can get into, but I think this might be a good time to talk about the complete streets, because I think, contrary to the previous one, where I maybe didn't think it was necessary, this may warrant sidewalks down to this point from nine. There are some sidewalks on nine as you get closer to eighty-four. You have the McDonald's nearby, you know, possibility of people using bicycles as transportation as well. So it seems to be more warranted here, and perhaps we should discuss further, get other people's thoughts.
I'm glad you mentioned that, because I had on my list as well to talk about. And as a matter of fact, the Comprehensive Plan Update Committee, which both Fred and I are on, and we just had our open house this past Saturday, which was a very successful meeting with the public, but we've been thinking a lot about sidewalks around the town, as well as pedestrian and bicycle trails and connections, and this portion of Route Nine is one of those that is particularly being seen as a place where sidewalks could really help the situation there. Now, Fred mentioned the Continental Commons Project, which actually had received preliminary site plan approval over a year ago, and there's been litigation on that particular matter for the last year and a half or so, but that's probably going to be coming back in soon for final approvals, and that has a proposed sidewalk on the eastern side of Route Nine that would come down. Not, I don't believe it comes down as far as the central site access. I'd have to, I'm not sure, I really can't remember, because it's been a while since we saw that, but it goes down to where the southern road on the eastern part of Route Nine intersects with Route Nine, which would be, would that be Ben?
It stops at Snook. It goes right, you know, right to Snook Road.
Snook Road.
Which is the street which.
Thanks, Fred.
Okay, I'll request a copy of those plans when I'm looking into the development and take a look at the sidewalks.
So a sidewalk on, you know, on the west side of Route Nine would be a good idea. It would be certainly consistent with the town's complete streets policy, as Anthony mentioned. It would start to, you know, form a continuous network of sidewalks on that part of Route Nine. It would obviously need, you know, cooperation with the owner of lot two, the future development sites, but, you know, since that owner is the one who basically owns the land and other parts of that shopping center, there is a sidewalk on the northern portion of that shopping center site. So again, this seems to be something that would make a lot of sense in terms of filling in the sidewalks in that area.
Loud and clear. Let us vet that out, and the next time we're in front of you, we'll have a more definitive answer for you.
Okay.
Do any of your employees come by bus?
So there's not a tenant at this point. It's a speculative development, so it's really too soon to say that.
These are all great things that were on my list, too.
I'm sorry, sir, okay.
So, yeah, so.
Great minds.
I know that Duchess County Best Route A serves the Duchess Mall site.
Yep.
Bus Route A serves Route Nine all the way from Fish Guild to Poughkeepsie. I don't know, I haven't looked lately in detail to see if there's a bus shelter anywhere else in the, like, the Home Depot portion of the site, but it certainly seemed, would seem to make sense to coordinate with Duchess County Transit to see if there's a need for a new bus shelter down in that area and to make sure that Bus Route A does actually serve the proposed warehouse facility, because it seems like with the number of employees who will be in there, there's a good chance that some of them will be coming on the bus. So again, that's not going to leave me with a whole lot of other things, which is good. That means we'll get through this probably fairly quickly. Anything else on transportation, circulation, or parking while we're at it?
So you're talking about interior to the site as well?
Yeah, since, since those are all transportation issues that these days should be really included in a transportation impact study.
Definitely. There's definitely a robust planting plan immediately adjacent to all the impervious areas, and I guess my, one of my questions would be, where's the snow storage anticipated to take place? You know, would, is it meant to happen within the impervious areas? Because if so, that would certainly limit the mobility of some of the trucks on the site, so I don't know if that was something that was factored in at this point of the, you know, design.
Sure, that, Franz, have you looked into, that's more of a site circulation question, but if it hasn't been vetted already, the next time we're here, we will certainly have an answer for you.
Okay.
Yeah.
So there is ample impervious coverage throughout the site, and we would look to store any of the snow within impervious areas and not on the landscape areas. The landscape areas, they're heavily planted, and we don't want to disturb and destroy any plants. There are trailer storage spaces in the end here, which we can store snow anywhere kind of in here and take up some trailer storage spaces depending on the tenant's needs. We also have this area in here, which is a striped island, which is meant to be left as striped in order to ease circulation a bit with trucks and get the trailers out. However, during winter where there's heavy snows and stuff, the trucks can certain circulate with a snow pile there, along with in just general uses. Depending on the tenants, a lot of them won't be using the full loading areas all the time, so they can work around some of the snow storage areas, as long as they're scattered kind of throughout the whole site. And there's a lot more areas where it's open wide turns to ease the trucks. The trucks can still easily maneuver around a few snow piles here and there.
So the passenger vehicle parking lots, were those designed with FedEx trucks or, you know, ambulances or larger vehicles in mind to be able to access? Or was it thought out where those, where deliveries would be made to the building? I mean, would they be made at the loading dock or, you know, because you have the offices in the corners, so.
Mm-hmm. So the delivery trucks were anticipated mainly to be utilizing the loading docks or parking within the loading areas. There are ramps on either, on either side, on basically all four corners, in order to ease access for a delivery truck to use a hand truck and whatnot to get into the site as well.
I also saw in the lower left-hand corner, I guess, of the building where the office is, the little vegetated island in the parking lot, there was a hydrant, fire hydrant there. How would a fire, I'm just wondering how a fire truck would be able to get to that? You know, would they, would they? It was right in the middle of the parking island, so I don't know. I guess I had a question about, you know, is that accessible? Is that accessible? It's in the middle of the landscaped island in the vehicular parking lot, so.
It depends on, it is acceptable, depends on the type of truck, that a smaller bumper truck, yes, will be able to get in there. We have submitted to the fire department four comments on that. We're awaiting comments for our forum time as well.
Okay. And then I know for the McDonald's project recently, we talked about bike racks. Is that something that we want to have factored in here? Probably something to consider as well.
Yes, good point.
Electric charging, how many, how many parking for electric charging?
I think that's, that was already brought up by the county in their first letter, and I think that's been added to the plan.
It's, it's been added to the plan. We do specify certain spaces for, to be EV-ready spaces, the conduit will be run, and then whenever the chargers get put in, everything's ready to go.
You know, New York is going real heavy on us with that.
Yes, it's across the board, New York, New Jersey, all the developments are the same way. So we're planning for it, even, even if there isn't a regulation in place, we're always planning, I know, Crow, some of their other sites, they're grandfathering into not needing them, and they're still putting in what they need to, for the vehicles, EV vehicles, so.
A question I asked some time ago was the, I know when they tore down the building, they left a lot of junk, and I don't know if you've gone over that and seen the soil and.
So we have done geotechnical investigation out there, and we will continue as we move forward with the project. Anything that's being reused, we'll go through a testing procedure and make sure it's suitable to be used.
So we did have the letter from Historic Preservation about the Phase One A assessment. I didn't see any opinion provided by our consultants, and I don't know if that's warranted. I know, you know, we're definitely in a sensitive area. It's come up on other projects. Would it make sense to get the opinion of a consultant on our end to opine on the information provided as well? Or is the letter from Historic Preservation sufficient from our standpoint? It's a very sensitive area, and I don't want to not leave this meeting without that discussion.
It's a good point. What are people's thoughts?
Well, was real, wasn't that all done when they originally put that in? Do we need to do it again? Because they, they held up that project. They came in here for over a year working on that. Happened to be an old timer. They came in here over a year working that, the whole project, before they even put any shovel in the ground, so I don't know if it's.
Well, let me ask the applicant team, is there anyone here who could give us kind of a quick overview of the Phase One study that was done and see if people have any questions on the board?
So we didn't write the Phase One study. I can tell you briefly, from what I understand, has been found. So the entire site has been developed for decades, and as Mr. Cantor had here, just.
You're dating me, you're dating me. You're dating me.
Just, just mentioned, for a few, a few months, has indicated that they did go through a rigorous process in order to build them all to begin with. So, what the Phase One study went and we did some, actually, my company went and did some additional borings and test pits in areas that weren't necessarily already developed to see what kind of fill was in the, was beneath the actual surface. So, we went in the areas that were planning on disturbing, that are currently grassed or vegetated areas, where there may not have been any real disturbance. And what the Phase One ultimately wound up finding is that there was a substantial layer of fill placed, indicating that there was no real historic value to it at this point. And those areas were conducted more or less in this vicinity, because this is, there's a, that's really the only grass portion of the site that were disturbed. And then it was...
Further, it's not only that, is it the northern portion of the site as well?
Talking to the mic.
The northern portion of the site as well is going to be retained by the owner, the seller, excuse me. And the borings identified that there were no native organic layers beneath the fill there. So, it wouldn't indicate that there was any native organics at the time that this, was the Civil War site was present, that there would be any artifacts in that location, so...
I just want to let you know, we do have an active group.
I understand.
No, and I'm not actually questioning what your findings are. It was actually quite a comprehensive report. I guess my question was more to the board as to whether we think it's suitable to have somebody, bring in somebody to opine on the report provided. Like I said, we hadn't, we didn't receive any comment from our consultants to this point, and I know we went through that process on other projects in a very nearby area. So, I guess I'm just, I don't know if people, other people on the board believe that's appropriate or not. I'm not sure. I'm just asking the question.
Well, let me just go back a little bit and mention what the State Historic Preservation Office's original letter, which was April 25, 2022, indicated that, of course, this is an archaeological sensitive area. It's in the immediate vicinity of the National Register-listed Revolutionary War Fishkill Supply Depot site. And then it went on to say that there's a, their records indicate a high sensitivity for cultural features, and so therefore the State Historic Preservation Office recommended that a Phase 1A literature search and sensitivity assessment survey was warranted. So, that's what we have here. This is the Phase 1A Archaeological Assessment, Proposed Warehouse, et cetera, dated September 2022, received by our Planning Office, September 26, 2022. And then there's a second letter from the State Historic Preservation Office stated September 30, 2022, basically indicating that they reviewed the Phase 1A Archaeological Survey Report. The Phase 1A Archaeological Survey documented prior soil disturbance across the project area. The Office of Parks Recreation Historic Preservation concurs with the report recommendation that no further archaeological investigations are warranted, and that based on their review, it is the opinion of the Office of Parks Recreation and Historic Preservation that no properties, including archaeological and/or historic resources listed in or eligible for the New York State and National Registers of Historic Places, will be impacted by this project. So, we have that from the, you know, the state authority that looks at these things. But Anthony is absolutely right, that if any board members feel that there's any further looking into the archaeological or historic significance of that site is warranted, that's certainly something we could look into. I would ask, Christian, do you know if CPL, as a firm, has in any of its offices experts in the archaeological and historic resource area?
We have planning staff that either they can review, or they can at least advise the board as to, and a consultant who could. I just don't know off the top of my head.
Well, what do other board members think? I mean, we need to hear from everybody what your thoughts are. BJ, even, why don't you go ahead if you have any thoughts?
I'm not sure that much on that topic. I have no idea. No comments.
Bob?
My feeling is that I'm glad that someone's trying to do something with that property. And I get the historical part and everything, but it hasn't been treated like an historical part for the past 20 years. So, I'm just wondering, you know...
Is that treated?
Possibly that it's, I don't know, that not, something I find relevant. That's just my opinion.
Ron, here, any thoughts?
I don't know any specific thoughts. Felix?
Yeah, I'm trying to think about this. Are we thinking, Anthony, I'm not sure what to do.
Yeah. Feel free to ask. I want to have the discussion here.
Okay. Because with the other project, the content of the comments, we had another company come in and actually go over everything, but I, I'm not sure if we need to go there on this one. This has been developed. All that company did, they didn't do any archaeological work. They just looked at old work that was done and made their determinations, pretty much. And I think that's what our Phase 1A is doing here. So, if shipos okay, you know, if star preservation's okay, I mean, I don't know if we want to just keep beating this. I think we should be okay with it, but that's my feeling. I don't think getting another consultant is going to come up with a different answer for us. I think it'll be the same.
No, and I agree with that, and I actually appreciate John reading the letter here, because I did read it before the reading, but him reading it out loud kind of got me in the mindset of reading what's in this letter here, and I think, you know, there's enough here to, you know, from the state that suggests that no further investigation is required. So, I would land on the side that no, you know, that we wouldn't need a consultant to look at it further. If CPL had somebody in-house that could opine to it, that would certainly help, but I don't know that we need to go, you know, outside the box to another consultant. But I wanted to make sure that this was something that the board was discussing, and that's all. But I think I'm on the side as well of not requiring any further investigation or bringing in another consultant. So, that's where, that's where I'm standing right now.
And I just want to further ask, when you're doing your construction, is, will there be anybody on site that, I mean, there's not, most of the parts that you go into is fine, but there's some, like, area that hasn't been disturbed? Will there be anybody there looking at that?
Well, when we state that there's, that hasn't been disturbed, that's what the Phase One investigation, the borings, were really to determine. It determined that it was disturbed, it was, fill was brought in. There just wasn't any improvement, any pavement on it, it happened to be grass. So, that's what warranted more investigation in that area.
Fred, do you have any more specific thoughts on it?
I think it's already been done, so, you know, I really do. It took a year to do it, a year and a half or two years to do it, so...
Jody, how about you?
I agree with Bob and Anthony and Felix. I don't think it needs to be, I don't think anything further needs to be done.
Okay.
However, if you find Jimmy Hopple the snow.
Just in case.
She is buried somewhere.
All righty then. Okay, well, here's what I would like to do now. So, we went through a lot of things, but what we haven't done yet is ask Christian to go through CPL's fairly lengthy engineering memo. So, why don't we do that now? And, you know, we can have any follow-up discussions or any questions that the applicant team might have about any of those things.
Thank you. I'm going to be reading from our October 7 letter. A reference was made to an October 11 letter, I believe. I don't know if that was, I just want to make sure I'm reading.
I think I missed that.
Okay. I just want to, I just want to make sure I'm, I'm filling in for John, and I just want to make sure I'm the latest and greatest.
I think October 11th was when we received it, when it got, when it got circulated to the team, yeah. So, that's where the evidence come from.
Regarding Seeker, lead agency circulation process has been completed. No apparent objections. We feel it's appropriate for the board to declare themselves lead agency for environmental review under Seeker at this meeting if they so choose. General comments, it appears in addition to a town wetland disturbance permit or freshwater wetlands disturbance permit will also be needed from DEC. Regarding to a fill analysis memo that was provided, the memo refers to 77,000 yards of fill import. The cut fill analysis, however, showed the total filled impact of site will exceed 210,000. We just need to make sure which of those numbers is correct. An agreement between property owners to cover future maintenance should be provided for all shared stormwater management facilities. Applicants provide a response to county planning department comments, which we ask that the board review for completeness and adequacy. We recommend that the board review and discuss landscaping, lighting, and signage and make their own determination with respect to adequacy. On the subdivision, the purpose of the proposed access easement for the lot 940402 on the norly portion of the site has been indicated. It appears that the easement should extend to the Route Nine entrance. Applicants advise that the retaining wall will be subject to a building permit as it exceeds a four-foot height, and structural calculations and a stamped design detail will be needed. Regarding grading, the cut fill analysis indicates 210,000 cubic yards of fill will be required for import, which equates to approximately 8,000 truckloads. So, there's three questions here. One, what's the source of that fill going to be? Two, what quality assurance is going to be in place to make sure that no waste or contamination will be brought into the site? And three, finally, was the construction traffic, the estimated 8,000 trucks, was that included in the traffic impact study? Drainage, please include infiltration test data for the proposed stormwater infiltrators and include an oil-water separator prior to the stormwater discharge into the federal wetland to the west of the project site on sheet DR1B. Regarding utilities, please provide the Fire Prevention Bureau approval for proposed firefighting and prevention appurtenances, access roads, hydrant locations, and any building stamp pipe or fire department connections. Provide Dutchess County Health Department approval when available. Comment regarding the southwest of the hydrant on Lot 1A, you know, does it have the adequate 10-foot minimum clearance from the drainage pipe and head wall? Suggestion for one of the, moving one of the hydrants, separation issues. How will the connection shown at the norly water main on Lot 1D be made to the existing water main from Lot 2? Regarding lighting, please provide cut sheets and details of the proposed light fixtures to confirm the maximum height of 20 feet. Regarding the SWIP, copies of the required state and federal wetland permits should be provided to the town prior to construction. A copy of the approved five-acre request needs to be added to the SWIP when that's received from the town, and the final shipo OPRHB acceptance letter needs to be added to the SWIP also before filing the notice of intent. And we had a number of comments regarding the traffic analysis. I don't really wish to, you know, read all of them here. I just want to make sure that our letter is referencing a traffic impact study that was last revised September 26. Is that the latest?
That sounds...
Yes, it is.
That it is, okay. Yeah, this is, you know, was written by our, our traffic group in our, I believe, at our Rochester office, but, you know, we did have some traffic comments. And that's, you know, the overall substance of our comment letter on this.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. And I will check in our office if it's the desire of the board, if they want, you know, CPL to investigate whether or not an independent review of the Phase One, was it a 1A or a 1A and a 1B?
1A.
Just a 1A. I can certainly check out of however the board does not wish to pursue that, like it does let that lie.
Well, you know what? If you could just check to see if there is anyone in, you know, your office who can do those types of things, it would be good to know for future reference anyway. But I think the sense of the board pretty much was that that probably will not be necessary for this particular review. But if, if there is such a person easily, readily available, and you can just quickly ask them the question, you know, without having seen the Phase 1A study, is this something that you think should, we should be looking at further? Or, you know, we could ask for some kind of a quick comment to that effect in the next memo for the next upcoming meeting. Thanks, that'd be great. Dominic, do you have any questions or comments? I have a few more things to get to, but I wanted to...
Well, my job's very simple tonight, because I can confirm Ms. Gray's recommendation to the board that you acknowledge the fact that the board is now lead agency since the notice was sent out, and there has been no objections in more than 30 days has elapsed since the notice being sent out.
I'm going to quickly go through a few more things, but do board members have any other things you want to bring up before I do that?
Mr. Cantor, can I just, Chairman Cantor, can I make one request?
Absolutely.
In the event that there is an individual at CPL who does have a question about the Phase 1A, can we ask permission for our consultant who did the Phase 1A to communicate directly with that individual at CPL to try to, you know, address any questions that they may have? I know that your practice is that if any of our consultants are going to interact directly with your consultants, that we ask permission and that that permission be given by the board. So, I wanted to raise that just as a means to try to, you know, facilitate effective and, you know, progressive communication.
Right. I understand your, your question. I think it would be a little bit premature to do that kind of authorization at this point without even knowing, you know, who or if there is such a person readily available. I think the best way to deal with it would be to, you know, to find out for our next meeting and to, if there is such a person, to get a quick indication of whether they'd be available or interested to, you know, participate further. And then at that point, we could, you know, the board could revisit the question. But again, I think the general sense of the board was that further investigation is not going to be necessary in this case, but unless we hear something different.
Absolutely. Okay. Thank you.
Yeah. Felix, did you have something?
No, I don't know what else you have to go get.
Okay.
Go, go get them.
All right. There's not a whole lot more, but this one is actually something that I think is quite important, so, and I don't think it's been discussed yet, but, so, I mentioned that Fred and I are working on the comprehensive plan update, which is probably going to be completed hopefully by the end of this year. But the current 2009 comprehensive plan actually emphasizes the importance of gateways to the town, and that's something we're really picking up on more so with the update. But this portion of the town, including Route Nine south of I-84, is one of the significant gateway corridors in Chapter 2, Goal F, page 24, if you want the reference. The plan states that these gateway entrances to this town establish the first impression people have of the town of Fishkill, and the objective should be to preserve and enhance the visual character of these corridors. the visual character of these corridors, and to distinguish Fishkill from other municipalities. And that this warrants special attention to the design and appearance of proposed development or redevelopment. Now, of course, and notably, this particular site has a current dilapidated condition of existing abandoned buildings. It's degraded the visual character of the corridor for quite some time. And, but the positive thing here is that this redevelopment plan presents an opportunity to enhance the corridor and make it into a special gateway into the town. So the proposed warehouse facility is a very large-scale building, which presents some aesthetic challenges. And we've probably talked about that a little bit at past meetings, but not, not a whole lot. The applicant has made a good start, I thought, at presenting an attractive building design. Actually, can we get, do we have the elevations or the, the sketch of the building handy that we might be able to turn to? See if that's loaded in there.
Well, that's on the original submission. It's not part of this one. So I would not have that available to see if we...
Yeah, we do have, right, the landscape plan, but just we don't have the elevations available for tonight's meeting.
We, we did resubmit the full package. So we've resubmitted the full package, and I believe the renderings were in that. What we have here readily available, or at least my fingertip right here, is broken down items of our site plan without the renderings of them. And I don't believe Deb was able to bring them up.
I can go back that far.
We submitted for this here. We submitted...
I was told to use this. They resent, somebody resents stuff to me today, and I was told to use this instead of what you originally sent for the presentation. By your team.
Okay. Well, anyway, so I'm hearing that we don't have it to show, and it, it certainly would be helpful to, to have it next time to show to the public as well. But the point I was, the points I was going to make are that, again, it's a very large-scale building, presents aesthetic challenges. The applicant's made a good start of presenting an attractive building design, but in my mind, anyway, I'm thinking, well, let's make use of the design and landscaping guidelines in the town zoning code to enhance the building and the site design even more by providing some architectural features to break up the long, flat, monolithic character of the building facade facing Route 9, and enhance the landscaping plan with the addition of some large-size evergreen trees in the green space facing Route 9. So, as I was thinking about it, there are possibilities perhaps for breaking up the mass of the building. Perhaps, you know, one idea might be to look at expanding the window areas on the facade somewhat. Another possibility might be to vary the, the roofline, instead of having a flat roofline for the whole 780-foot plus-or-minus facade, adding some, some kind of architectural variation in it. And then adding a number of large native evergreen trees interspersed with the proposed deciduous trees, which are mostly red maples in that area that is up closer to, to Route 9 along the green space facing Route 9. And the landscaping plan would also help to blend the large-scale building into this gateway corridor. So I, I know and I understand that, you know, again, the use of any of the land on Lot 2, which is the future development sites, would have to have cooperation of that, the owner of Lot 2. But I really think it's gonna be important to take a look at that landscaping plan and see what else could be done to add not only more screening, but in this particular case, I think evergreen trees along those, along with the deciduous trees would help a lot in terms of helping to blend the building as viewed from Route 9. So that's, that's the gateway concept, and that's, those things are all in, in the town code and the, um, the design guidelines that we've actually, were added to the, the code fairly recent, within the last year or two. Something to take a look about, something to have the architects take a look at and see if there's anything that can be done to help, um, help with that gateway corridor aspect.
Okay. Yeah, we certainly can look at the, the landscaping. We had, I mentioned it's largely red maples we were looking at, actually changing up some of the species along the front deciduous trees. But to your point, we will visit what type of appropriate native evergreens to intermix within that and build a, a nice barrier. And certainly, I'll have the architects take a look at what is feasible and really what might break up for some of your suggestions.
And, and don't get us wrong that, you know, this is, this has the potential to really be a, a great improvement to that site. And, you know, unfortunately, in my mind, given the, the mix of uses that are allowed in the planned shopping center zone, which is about the most all-inclusive zone that we have in the town, there are a whole range of things that could have, you know, been proposed there. And, you know, a warehouse has its, um, its benefits, but it also has its liabilities in terms of a use and a, and an architectural style. So, these are all things I think the planning board is interested in trying to get the best possible development there that we can.
Yeah, understood.
So the other things are gonna be pretty quick. Again, all of the traffic comments in CPL's memo that we didn't really get into in detail tonight, but I think they're, they're fairly straightforward in terms of revisions and things that should be addressed in a further revised traffic impact study should be submitted. And I think there was mention of the fire department recommendations. One thing I might suggest is that sometimes it does take a while to get the fire department to comment, and so it might not hurt to do a little bit of follow-up legwork with them and see if you can get them to submit those sooner rather than later. Also, I think the CPL memo mentioned the need to submit light and cut sheets and details both to confirm the height of the poles and the parking lots, but also to confirm that lights will be fully shielded and dark sky compliant and meet the other requirements of the town's lighting, lighting regulations. And, um, oh, so, do you know if material boards with samples of architectural materials and colors and textures have been submitted to the town yet? No?
No, they have not.
Okay, so that, that needs to be done also. And, um, so I saw that there's a proposed monument sign on the plans, and you should just check with our building department to make sure that those are consistent with the town sign regulations.
So we show a location of the monument sign. That's gonna be tied with the architecture, and we'll certainly adhere to any regulations that's applicable.
Okay.
We're not looking to push any limits on it.
All right. I think that's about it. All right, well, well, why don't we do this? As indicated in CPL's memo, the lead agency circulation process has been completed, and as Dominic mentioned, with no objections to the planning board serving as lead agency. So would someone like to make a motion that the planning board declares itself as lead agency to conduct the environmental review for the 415, 453 U.S. Route 9 site development plan and CHI acquisitions two-lot subdivision application?
So...
Jody moves it. Is there a second?
Second.
Oh, so, BJ, I don't think you're an appointed voting member tonight, sorry. How about Bob?
Bob's?
Second.
Bob's second. Sorry about that. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? All right, that motion passes. So I do understand that the applicant has requested that the board schedule a public hearing for our next meeting, but my own personal feeling is that there are just too many things remaining that we've talked about tonight and things that are in the CPL memo to do that. We're gonna have a lot to go through at the next meeting. So I'll, I'll let you speak in a second, but I just wanted to get a reaction from other board members on that.
I wanna make sure we have everything in, because I don't have, wanna have multiple public hearings. And that's been a problem with some of our projects recently.
He said it.
Yep.
Here, here. With that said, I do appreciate the applicant's attention to this property. It's, it's long overdue, so I don't want that to get kinda caught up in our stance on this issue.
Yeah, I agree. Please, go ahead.
Yeah, I was just gonna say, we are, we're confident that in our next submission, we will satisfy the board and your consultants with, with respect to the comments that we've heard tonight. We do appreciate, you know, the, the willing, the willingness, hopefully, to schedule a public hearing at your next meeting, you know, provided that all of the submission material that we provide for your next meeting do satisfy your comments. We are anxious to, to hear from the public, to make sure that, you know, if the public has any comments or concerns that we can address, that we do incorporate that into the application as soon as possible. But we understand that the board wants to also be satisfied with the detail and, and the, the level of material that will be presented to the public. So we understand that, but we do hope that the board will consider at your next meeting scheduling the public hearing for the meeting thereafter.
All right. Well, this, this is the first meeting with your application team that I think we've really been able to get into a, a lot of detail like we did tonight. It's been unfortunate that we've had very full agendas up until the last meeting or so, but I think we're doing a lot better now, and where things seem to be easing up a little bit much now that I said that.
Thank you.
Things will go right back to where they were.
I would.
Yeah.
I was next door and peeking until midnight last night, so I'm happy to be leaving earlier than midnight from Fishkill, so thank you for that.
Okay. Well, thanks for coming, and we'll see you next time. So, yeah, the submission deadline for the next meeting is, again, Debbie is?
October 26th or November 10th.
2:00 p.m., right?
2:30.
2:30.
Yes.
An extra half hour.
Give you a half hour.
Debbie's always generous.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. I think tonight was very, you know, very helpful, and I think we've made a lot of progress, and I hope that we've been able to answer, you know, any questions that you've had at this point. And we look forward to meeting with you again on November 10th.
Good. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. So we do have the next applicant here.
Yes.
Good. Let me just put this stuff away. I don't particularly need a break, but does anyone else need a break? I think we're moving along pretty well, so unless anybody insists, I think we should keep on moving.
This is the last one.
Okay. Yeah, if anyone just individually feels the need to go out for a minute.
Don't, don't break the chain. Let's go.
Yeah. Okay, so, the next item on the agenda is TL Holdings of New York, three-lot subdivision. Board to review submission made by the applicant's representative on September 28, 2022. Welcome back. It's been a little while since we've seen you.
Yeah, it's been a little bit. We've been a little thinner, but probably not. This is the TL Holdings lot line realignment. Just a brief overview, what we've done since we've been here last. We updated the plan with some new survey information. We updated our board of health application, we've gone out and gotten our site distances, we're coordinating with DOT on...
Ryan, I'm sorry, can you just...
Okay.
Thank you.
Can you hear me?
I can hear you, as most people at home can.
Okay. I'll go over that again. TL Holdings, lot line realignment, two lots proposed. We have one house under construction right now that has a permit, that has a foundation in the ground right now, going through the construction process. We had some recent survey work done on the site, so we went out and located some of the rockout croppings. We shot some site distances for our DOT permit that we're submitting for. And we also located the, the actual width of the driveway. When the original survey went out, there was snow on the ground, so the exact widths due to plowing weren't really obtainable. So we thought we'd freshen a drawing and update what, what exists on site. So we've gone ahead and done that. We have, uh, board of health is, is reviewing some of the soil tests that we've done out there. In the last submission, we did a SWIP, because we're, we're over an acre disturbance, but less than five, so we put a basic SWIP together. And other than that, I think those were, were kinda like the, the top items that the town asked us to look at.
Okay. Thank you for the quick update. Christian, would you like to go through CPL's engineering memo?
Sure. We had a minor comment regarding the SWIP to clarify that the, one of the proposed homes is currently under construction. Existing conditions planned indicates the construction was already commenced on the site and that the driveway has already been widened. And the question is, were all appropriate permits obtained to do that work? A meets and bounds legal description for the shared driveway easement needs to be provided in a form acceptable to the town attorney, and this agreement should also include the underground utilities serving Lot 2, provide a common driveway detail. A freshwater wetlands disturbance permit appears to be needed for the proposed disturbance to the well and its adjacent area. And again, need approval from the DOT for the proposed driveway arrangement and county health department approval. That was what we had.
I'll just mention that the planning board did classify this action as unlisted at the June 9th meeting and indicated that we would conduct an uncoordinated environmental review pursuant to Seeker. Any questions or observations from board members at this point? Jody, down on, down your way for Fred?
No.
All right, Anthony?
Yeah, I had a question about the proposed easement. We didn't have a survey, or a survey wasn't done of the entire three-lot subdivision, so it's hard to tell if that...clearly they put it in a way that it serves the future third lot, and they thought of that, but it's hard to tell, you know, from our standpoint, if that's the most suitable location. Could there perhaps be a better one? I, I don't know if that's, you know, that might be something we would wanna opine on. I mean, they're, they're providing the easement, which would have to be reviewed by our consultants, but is that the best location? I don't think there's enough information on the plan for us to opine, or even for our consultants to necessarily opine.
The only thing I'll offer is that the location of the house going up right now and the future Lot 2, and where we can fit a well inseptic that needs current separations, it kinda forces that, that driveway lower. And where we show that access to Lot 3 is right now an existing, it's an existing farm path. So all we're doing is just following the natural, the natural grade that is on site right now, and that is actually used to currently access Lot 3. So we just formalized it with an easement for future access.
And is that area basically one that would provide minimum disturbance to any of the surrounding wetlands?
Yes. Yes, there's, I mean, to, to right now, there's, there is no disturbance required to get Lot, to Lot 3, because it is that existing old farm road.
Yeah. Well, I think that's a very good reason in my mind.
I think it is. I think it is. It's good to have that out in the open.
I'm glad you asked, glad you asked the question.
Yeah, not saying it's the wrong spot, just asking.
You have any other hypothetical questions?
No.
Any questions or comments from you, Dominic?
No, you stole my thunder by reminding the board that at the June 9 meeting, the actions you took regarding SEAKER to require an uncoordinated review, but that's quite all right, so. And in addition to that, you know, I think the board, similar to our earlier discussion, has to decide if it has enough information to schedule a public hearing on this project.
Okay, I was going to ask you that. Thank you for that. Oh, we also did receive a letter from the State Historic Preservation Office dated June 28, 2022, stating that no properties will be impacted by this proposed subdivision. So we have that. So, yeah, any other questions, comments, observations from board members? Because if not, we can go directly to a motion to set a public hearing. Anyone want to weigh in before we do that?
We have no other public hearing, correct, for the next?
Correct, at this point.
We may at this moment.
This would be the first item, so.
I assume.
Oh, okay, so this would be, I know this is what you were thinking in your mind, this would be a motion to schedule a public hearing on the proposed TL Holdings of New York three-lot subdivision at 1784 Route 52 for the November 10th planning board meeting at 7:00 p.m. or as soon thereafter as possible.
Correct.
That's what I thought, that's what I thought you said.
Exactly what you said.
Is there a second? Jody seconded it. Jody seconded it, sorry about it. Any further discussion?
No.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All right, any opposed? Any abstentions? That passes seven to zero. So we do need a public hearing sign, which I presume would be one sign at the current driveway entrance on Route 52.
Yeah, one should be on it.
I don't think there are any other alternatives, really.
It's really a.
All right.
Agreed.
Agreed, okay. Well, so I'll look to, first to our consultants to ask whether it might make sense to authorize the preparation of a draft EAF parts 2 and 3 and a draft determination of environmental significance for the board's consideration at the November 10 meeting. Do you see any reason why we aren't there yet, at least to have them available to look at if the public hearing goes well?
Makes sense to me, Mr. Chairman. It would be informative for the board, and it could, you know, provide some focus as to whether or not there's any issues that are remaining that need to be addressed, and if all goes well, the board would have those documents for consideration then.
All right. And so normally, we ask CPL to prepare those, so, so is there a motion to authorize our consultants? Actually, I should get a sense from the board that we should go ahead and do a motion, but I was going to do the motion anyway and see what happened. Motion to authorize our consultants to prepare a draft EAF parts 2 and 3 and a draft determination of environmental significance for the board's consideration at the November 10 meeting.
So move to?
All right, Felix moves it. Is there a second?
Second.
Jody seconds it. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? That passes seven to zero. All right.
Thank you, guys, I appreciate it.
All right, thanks for coming.
Brian, I'm just a paperwork question. Okay, thank you.
All right, well, we almost finished by nine o'clock, but I had a couple of things under other business, which actually should be quite quick.
I swear.
But meanwhile, so let me just ask the board members first before I bring up a couple of things, if anyone has, since this is an evening where we're ending fairly early, if you have any thoughts or things you wanted to bring up. You know, we have two hours to fill in, if you would like.
And we could call that early.
But I'll give you another chance later. So first item, planning board required annual training. So we are getting near the end of the year. Members should make sure that you have your minimum three credit hours of training for 2022, and that includes carryover credits from previous years. That's, of course, required by town official code for those people in the audience who are still out there watching us, and since there is no Yankee game tonight, from what I understand, I couldn't imagine anything better to watch than us. And our recorded webinars easily available to access both at the New York Planning Federation and the Duchess County Planning Federation site, so they're easy to get to, easy to access, easy to watch, so please make sure you do that.
Are you saying even the recorded ones, you can just watch it at our convenience?
Absolutely. There is a procedure where you can get certificates of completion from those organizations. You have to contact them, let them know you need the certificate of completion, but yeah, then you can just access it on their websites. I think the New York Planning Federation actually has to give you special access through an email to view the recorded sessions, but they absolutely do count towards your required training.
That's good to know.
And the next two are Zoom.
There are, right, there are two live Zoom ones that you can, I think, still sign up for at the Duchess County Planning Federation.
October 27, but I already signed.
Yeah, and they both are in different aspects of affordable housing, which I think is a very relevant and good topic for board members.
And they might, and they probably going to rerun the one that they did today. I'm assuming they're going to have to redo that.
So Fred, what was today supposed to be?
Housing.
It was supposed to be a site walk and site visit, right?
Yeah, but he said that, I had to bring an umbrella.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, it was an in-person one, right? Not a website.
Yes, that one, that one.
That was in person.
That one would have been in person, so, you know, if they do reschedule it, they might, you might be able to still sign up for it.
Yeah, it was filled, so they were looking for people to drop out, and then they dropped the course. Well, hey, but I'm assuming because of the weather.
Yeah, I think so. I'll give you a real quick update on the Conference of Plan Update Committee, and I'll ask Fred to fill in anything that I might miss, but again, we did have our open house this past Saturday. It was quite well attended, as far as I thought, gave the public an opportunity to review the survey results and the draft plan update text draft that we've been working on for months now, and other materials. And also, it was good to talk to, you know, the public in person in that kind of an informal format where, you know, people were asking all kinds of questions and looking at all the maps that had been prepared. And actually, I think you'll be pretty impressed when you do see the range of maps and the things that the committee has been discussing. On that note, there is going to be a joint meeting of the committee with the town board at the board's regular meeting on Wednesday, October 9 at 7:00 p.m.
Same location?
19th.
19th.
Did I say 19th? I was reading it too quickly, October 19th. I think I said it, but I slurred it too much. And of course, the public is encouraged to attend. Oh, a webpage has been set up on the town's website for the Conference of Plan Update, so there is some material on there, not a lot yet, but there will be more and more put on. I know that the draft plan text is up there, and there was also a notice put on there for the open house that was just held. So the committee is hopeful to complete the plan process by the end of this year. That does include the town's environmental review process.
Which you think, you really think is going to get done by the end of this year.
So we'll see. That's the idea. And then adoption of the plan update by the town board, of course, it's the town board that will be actually adopting the plan. The committee, you know, will be recommending the draft plan that we've put together. Fred, do you have any other things?
I will let you know, it's been over a year now that we've been meeting at least once and sometimes twice a month, so we put a lot of work into it. We're not done yet, but we get, you can see the horizon.
All right. And then the only other thing we have is that the 2023 planning board meeting schedule was put together by Debbie and circulated to the board. So meetings will continue to be once per month on the second Thursday of each month at 7:00 p.m., unless otherwise noted on the schedule or as revised if necessary.
Was it an email that went up?
Yeah, Debbie sent out an email.
Last week.
Last week.
It's also on the website too now, so.
Thank you, Debbie, for all your hard work.
I appreciate it, thank you.
You're very good about getting us the information and helping us, so it's much appreciated.
You're welcome, thank you.
I concur with that.
Hey, I have brown nose too, I agree.
Students have places to get emails early, don't watch them, 7:30.
She always has my back.
And sometimes much later than Debbie should be in the office.
You are correct, thank you.
Yep, so I think that's all I had. Anyone else have anything? Because if not, we're going to get out of here relatively early.
Well, I could think of a few. Move to adjourn.
Oh darn, I'll second it.
It's a special day today.
And as Mary used to say, we'll vote with our feet.
That's what she was saying.
I don't think you're one of them.
Not for a long time. Yes, I think you're right.